Good morning, and I'd like to officially call to order the Potter County Commissioners' Court Special Meeting, July 8, 2014, at 9:07 a.m. Let the record note those currently in attendance, Commissioner Morthea and Judge Ware. We are expecting other commissioners with conflicts this morning come in, but no action will be taken. This is informational only. So our legal counsel has given us permission to proceed with the meeting. Agenda item number one, salary and compensation, to hear and discuss a presentation by Michelle Arseneau-Tack on issues regarding implementation of a salary classification system. Michelle?
Up here? Up here, yes. Okay. I'm Michelle Arseneau, the Human Resources Specialist with the Texas Association of Counties, and it's my understanding that I'm here today to kind of share my experiences dealing with salary and compensation plans in relation to county government. And since I'm just here to kind of give information, I'm happy to answer questions from anybody who has them as I go along. I'm gonna try not to jump around too much, but I kind of expect you guys to answer questions, ask questions, so that I can answer them. But I did develop a compensation plan when I was the Human Resources Director in Wichita County. There's two ways to go when you're dealing with compensation, and it's a really difficult, huge topic to tackle. I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything. It's the toughest thing you'll probably ever do, because you're never gonna be able to make everybody happy. Every supervisor or every elected official thinks their employees are the best ones in the county and should get paid accordingly. You can pay an outside agency or a third party to do all the hard work for you. It costs a lot of money. A county this size, it'll probably cost six figures. It'll be really expensive. So it's a lot of money to spend when you don't already have the full court's support to implement whatever comes down the pipeline after you've spent that kind of money. It makes these people and all the employees upset when you spend a lot of money for a plan and it doesn't get implemented. And I see that happen a lot. I see it in a small county up to large counties, spending money to do a plan, but we can't get the full court's support for the outcome of that plan, and it gets put on a shelf. And so that's money wasted. And so that's something to really think about and talk about internally when you have the full court, you know, as you make decisions about what you're gonna do. It can be done internally on your own. That's what we decided to do in Wichita County, but it took us a year to even put a plan together. By the time we decided we were gonna do it ourselves into having something to implement, the first thing you have to have, no matter which road you choose, yourselves, doing it yourselves, or doing it with a third party, is you have to have job descriptions, current, up-to-date job descriptions. The third party will want those, you'll need them if you do it yourself, because it's from the job description we're going to make decisions about the value of those jobs in relation to where they fall in any kind of salary structure. So that's, you know, from what I understand from working with Potter County for the last couple of years, is you don't really have job descriptions. You have some semblance of a, you know, partial job description, but they're not complete up-to-date job descriptions. So that's like the biggest hurdle that you'll have. There's, it is informal, doing it yourself, you can go from somebody or a group or committee sitting down and taking every job title you have and ranking them and saying, "This is the most valuable job in the organization in the county, this is the least valuable." And somebody or a group deciding how those all fit into each other. That's a really simplistic view of deciding value on jobs. You can do a more formalized plan. What we did in Wichita County is myself, our auditor, the county judge, our budget officer, we went to a class and learned to develop what's called a job factor tool, where you make decisions about what's important on your jobs, education, experience, knowledge, skills, abilities, environmental issues, because we have people who work outside and that should be worth more points than somebody who's in an air-conditioned office, those types of things, making decisions about how you're going to value different factors. And then you, within each factor, you would develop, you know, zero points if it doesn't apply to that job, up to 20, 30, 40, 50 points, you know, depending. Usually they're weighted, you know, there's a whole system on how to come up with this tool. I would say it took us better part of six to eight months for the committee to get educated on how to develop the tool, to sitting down, developing it, talking about it, agreeing, getting it related to a agreement.
Michelle, can I ask a question there? Did, in Wichita County, when you used this job factor tool, was that happening parallel to the job description evaluation, or were they...
No, well, you need the tool before you can evaluate the job, okay? Yeah. So then, once you've got an agreed-on working tool, what we did was we divided up all our job descriptions among the committee members and sent them away with the tool and said, "Go, assign points." You know, so then you come back with a, each job description has a number of points. I think our point ranges probably went from 200 to 11 or 1200. You know, that's kind of a typical range, you know, where the janitor job was probably in the 200 range, and we did include elected officials, I think our sheriff, some of those, our district attorney and such, were at the high end of the range. And then you kind of just develop a worksheet, and everybody on the committee looked at it to say, "Well, does anything look skewed?" You know, because we're all just, it's a lot of judgment. You read a job description and make opinions about what that job is. And it's really difficult, even for Kate and me when I was there in HR, until you spend time in every office watching what people do, or with each employee doing their jobs, you only have an impression of what jobs are. And, you know, doing a job, you know, when you go and actually spend time, that's super time-consuming, you know? For one person, like if you wanted Kate to do a system where she goes and figures out what all these jobs are, her years, to sit with every employee for enough amount of time to really develop what that job is. So you have to rely on your directors, your supervisors, the elected officials, and what they tell you those jobs are. Everybody is going to do some inflation, you know, there's going to be some of that, mostly because these people hired their employees and they love their employees and they want the best for their employees, so it all comes from a good place. But you have to be able to push aside the, you know, the extra and really give true point values to those jobs, or you end up with a system that's already inflated. You know, and that's just, that's just one side of it. Now we've got to figure out what are our salaries compared to? Are we comparing them to other counties? Are we comparing them to the local market? Who are you competing with for employees? Is the oil field issue reached up here yet, or coming, no, not here, okay? It's going north, it's a hit-beloved area, so I don't know how much oil and gas you have up here, if there will be fracking in the future. But counties can't compete with oil field salaries, and they're losing, you know, they're losing employees to those jobs because they pay really high, but there's no benefits that come with it. So sometimes the county employees go do that job for a while, and then they come back to the county because they want health insurance, so they want retirement. So there's lots of value in those benefits, but you've got to figure out what are we going to compare ourselves to? A lot of counties look at other counties their size, but there is a flaw in that method because you're not competing, you might be competing with Randall County, but you're not competing with Wichita County for employees. You know, we're not fighting back and forth over employees. So you've got to try and decide if what other counties your size are doing matters to you. It's a measure, you know, and it has value, but it's not the perfect measure, and they're really not who you're competing with. So you've got to make determinations about who are we going to compare ourselves to. There's lots of information online, the government does lots of salary surveys, and you can go to different websites, and it'll tell you, you know, what certain jobs are being paid, and they have it split out by different geographical areas also. Like, I've looked up my own title, human resources type of jobs, and, you know, in Austin, where I live, human resource people make a lot more money than I make, but in tax view, I'm not a human resources director, and I don't work in Austin, I work out and about, you know, around the state of Texas, so I lose points for that. But that's, you know, you can't, another thing, you cannot find a match for every job. What you do is you pick certain jobs that are your benchmark jobs. You know, jailer, for sure, is one that you're gonna want to find matches for and do research on, because you have so many jailers, so much of your resources go there. And every county has issues with turnover in jail staff, you know, and there's lots of clerical-type jobs that you can benchmark that are really easy. But one thing that's difficult with county government is there are so many jobs in counties that nobody else does. You know, there's no other organization that does what the tax office does. That's like the only place where we pass out license plates. There's no, you know, so you're never gonna get benchmarking information for a job like that. You know, so it's really tough. You've got to talk internally amongst your supervisors and elected officials to see where they have perceived issues, like, do they feel like their people are particularly underpaid or overpaid, or, oh, nobody's gonna say overpaid, right? Anybody say overpaid? No, me either, I'm not overpaid. Or how they view themselves compared to other departments, or just internally. You know, it's a lot of research and questions to do. It's a big job to tackle on your own, but it's not, it's not something you can't do. When you, and you might even ask some third parties to give you a price on doing it for you, and see what that'll cost. I know Wichita County, before we did ours internally, we had an outside company do it, and that was probably 20 years ago, and it cost $70,000, something like that, 20 years ago, so you can imagine what it's probably gonna cost for a third party to do it now. Some of the issues with a third party is, especially if department heads and elected officials don't like the results, is complaining about the third party not really understanding county government, that's a big issue. There are a couple of companies who've done these four counties before that are still doing them, the Waters Consulting Group and Ray and Associates, so they actually at least have an understanding of counties and county jobs and county issues and that sort of thing. Anybody have questions?
Michelle, I have a question. So in Wichita County, once you went through the process of the job factor tool and then evaluating the job descriptions, establishing their point value, you were obviously operating day in and day out. So how did you take that information, that value system, and equate it to the salaries that already existed? How did you start to establish those control points or thresholds, or whatever it is that you might call it?
That comes from the salary surveys you do in your benchmarking, where you develop the minimum of a job value, a midpoint and a maximum. And then what you do, once you have those for your job groups, like, you'll only do that for, you know, from points, 200 to 400, this is our salary structure, and then we go to another one, you know, so you're not gonna have that many, you know, probably not more than 10 different job groups. And some counties, like your size, we split off law enforcement from everybody else, and they kind of had their own, it was a step and grade plan is what we developed. And then you plot all the current salaries within, you know, we've got points forums, a job worth 600 points, it's in this gray, where does it fall in relation to that midpoint and that maximum point? And you'll have, you know, the ideal is that everybody should be clustered around the midpoint. People who are outside the minimum, they gotta come up. People outside the maximum, that's a whole nother problem. Those are, those are called red circles. The ones outside the minimum are called gray circles. Gray circles, you move up somewhere between minimum and midpoint. Red circles, you have to make decisions about what are we gonna do with somebody who's already making more than we valued this job at? Never give them a raise? Give them a lump sum if we're giving out raises that doesn't throw their salary? There's different things that you can do. What did Wichita County do? We froze them. And when we gave merit raises, they got a lump sum that didn't grow their salary. So we would give them like 500 bucks, and January 1, and that would be it, but we didn't add that to their annual salary, otherwise you just perpetuate the problem. And kind of what I've seen in my experience working with counties who even talk about salary issues, we start talking about them because the janitors worked in the courthouse for 25 or 30 years and is the highest-paid employee because we've never addressed compensation, and he kept getting, whether it's a merit increase or a cost of living adjustment, for that long a time, and you never stop, you know, the value, you never set a maximum. I've had janitors making more than a commissioner before.
Yep.
Because it's too hard, especially in small counties, it's such a political issue and it's an emotional issue that we just...
A janitor probably was worth more than a commissioner.
A good janitor probably is worth a lot of money. I get so many complaints about janitors.
What was the timeframe to study, too?
An year. We spent an entire year developing, doing our evaluation, collecting the salary information, having our grade, seven grades set up, and then you've got to write policy. What about when somebody says, "I got a job that's changed, and it's changed so significantly I think they should get paid more," or "new jobs are added"? We have to evaluate those jobs ongoing.
How long ago did you do that study?
2000.
And how is it going today?
I couldn't answer that question, I've been gone too long. I've been gone from there for 10 years.
Have you had any input as to how this all worked out?
While I was there, it worked fine. I really, I think they're still using some form of it. Here's where even Wichita County struggles, and every county does. As the years go by, you have to reevaluate your minimum, midpoint, maximums for all your job grades, and sometimes we've got to drop off that low column, you know, and get rid of it, and move it up. You know, you have to make those adjustments, and, you know, no court can plan for the future, you guys can only plan for right now. You know, you can't bind future courts into any kind of following of the salary structure, and that's kind of what happens, you know, is you get a court who says, "Well, we can't afford to keep doing this." And then, you know, it gets put on the shelf for a year or two, and then somebody drags it back out and says, "Well, let's look at this again." And then, the more you fall behind, the harder it is to catch up. Taylor County is a good example of, they've fallen so far behind that they're, you don't even want to add them to your comparables because they're gonna skew your information so far down because jailers in Taylor County are making about $18,000 a year, you know, which is horrible.
And I'll pause right there, come again, you may have already...
That's right.
...know of this, was there an implementing template that you used to structure your process of science question, or was it something that...
What we did in Wichita County was we formed a committee, and some of the key people went and took a class to learn how to develop a job factor system tool, where we had a point system and evaluated each job based on that tool that we learned. We learned how to write the tool, and then we wrote our own, you know, where you can assign points based on how much education a clerk and county clerk's office needs compared to assistant district attorney, you know? And so, of course, the points that are given to that factor are gonna be different for those two jobs. That's how we get, you know, a total point value for each job.
You mentioned $70,000, and I just caught it off the cuff. Is that, was that a process of what it took to devise this process and structure?
It probably, that probably included writing job descriptions all the way to developing a step and grade plan and doing the salary comparables, a market study, and...
Correct me if I'm wrong, two questions, two calls. It's something, I guess, that we can mirror off of what you've already devised, and also, I believe that Potter County has implemented something similar to this a few years ago, at least started this process.
1999 was the last survey that this county has, a salary survey, 15 years ago, am I remembering that correctly? And I think, Michelle, the $70,000 that you were communicating when you walked in, Commissioner, was the third party that you said you utilized to then kind of evaluate and come in after the fact?
No, that was, that was a plan that they spent the money, got a plan...
And it was on the shelf.
Put it on the shelf, never got any...
And that's 20 years ago.
And that was, that was a lot of reason we decided to try and do it in-house, because there was still a lot of emotion about spending that money, money that could have been spent on salaries, you know? You know, so that's, that was one of the main driving factors of us deciding to try and tackle it in-house.
So let me be clear about the $70,000. Is that, that wasn't an outside contract that you utilized, that was in-house?
No, that was the outside, third party.
That was outside.
Yeah, that was a third-party study that was done and never implemented.
Can I ask a question? Was that 15 years ago, was that implemented?
For two years.
For two years. And then what happened? Do you all know kind of what happened, or...
Instead of following the pay scale, which is worth game, and across the board rates and discretionary money for departments to disperse these places off yet.
And that's, that's typical of county government, is we have new people on the court, or, you know, your financial situation changes, you know, it sounds like we got money coming in, gobs of money, some extra, and that type of thing. I mean, every county budget is a struggle, and so you have, I mean, that's not unusual for a plan to come into play, and you do it for a couple of years, and then for some reason, different makeup, different financial situation, and we can't keep it up.
And Carrie, just correct me if I'm wrong on my figures, but roughly, high 50s or 60% of our budget is directly driven from salaries. And so part of the reason for the conversation is obviously that's a big ticket from a budgetary perspective, and it is across the board for all industries and all counties, and there is not a financial windfall...
Six fixes, yeah.
Yeah, there is not a financial windfall kind of coming in to Potter County.
Where's the windmill? All around you.
So, Michelle, based on your experience in counting our size, are we, I mean, certainly where are we in terms of positioning of having this conversation?
Well, I think it's a conversation every county should be having, because putting your head in the sand only perpetuates problems, and it gets harder to get it out of the sand, you know? So definitely trying to make an effort at figuring out first, where, how are we doing? You know, that's the first question you have to answer, you know?
Well, the question that I want to come back to as well, and I agree with you, I don't think that we necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, if we've already established something in place, and it was for two years, reasoning why we sort of just did away with it in the court, decided to do across the board, maybe some things that we need to look at as well.
And it might bring that one courage...
Right.
You know, with less effort. For sure.
So is that in place, that, so to speak, is that something that we could retrieve and look at and get some semblance of where we left off? Was there anything that was efficient, and what we did that was beneficial?
We do still have the information gathered in that study available, and as a matter of fact, what I put together for the Compensation Committee for our first meeting, and we're in process of gathering information from department directors now, as directed by that committee, and as soon as we get that compiled, I'll bring them back together and we'll discuss that. But what I prepared for the Compensation Committee was to revive, if you will, that Ray and Associates study that was done, look at the grading system that they came up with at that time, and where all of our positions were placed within that salary grid by grade, and then see where our positions by the same titles fall within salary grade. Are we still kind of grouped the same way as we were at that time, and what are our outliers, and where are the jobs that are different from what they were at that time?
Far and wide are our positions in salaries. Are they that far out of sync?
We, you cannot compare salary dollars to the dollars that were assigned for the Ray and Associates study and all. What I tried to do is look at the grading, you know, if, if all of the jobs are still the same essentially as they were at the time that the study was done, we have a number of jobs that are out of placement, but not a huge number. We've probably got, you know, maybe 8 to 10% of the jobs, would you say, that are not placed accurately, or that were not, that are not the same. They're different titles, they're new jobs that morphed over the course of time.
Go back to Michelle, this 8 to 10%, could you just concentrate on that?
Sure, once you figure out, you know, your red cir, your green circles, those that fall below what you want your minimum values to be for the job grades, those are the easy fixes. We, I mean, at the very least, you bring them up to the minimum. You know, we, in an ideal world where money is no object, we want to see most jobs, other than entry level and new employees, being clustered around that midpoint of the range. That's, you know, in human resources world, that's the ideal. You're a government, you're the county, you're, you can't approach this the way a private sector company would, and that's part of developing your, your policy is where we feel we can compete in the market. You're not the market leader, where everybody comes to Potter County because they pay so great. Now, Dumas, it's different. That county wants to be the leader in the community and has priced their jobs accordingly, where I think a jailer in Moore County starts at $38,000. I should say that people won't move. You know, but they're, that's their attitude, you know, but that's not a typical county government attitude. We're, you know, we're kind of in the middle or lagging the market, what it's called, a little bit because of our circumstances, but we make up for lagging the market in salaries with our benefits. And that has to become a huge selling point when you're recruiting, is where else can you get, you know, it's hard to get young people to embrace the TCDRS retirement plan, but that's a huge way to sell your jobs, is health insurance and TCDRS and the value that brings.
One of the things that you said kind of concerns me is that you don't allow anything for experience or advanced training, you just have to fit within this little box.
Experience is a factor that we, that we use to value our jobs in Wichita County. But this is, this is a compensation basic view is a job is worth so much money. That janitor job is only worth so much money. And if somebody's dream is to be a janitor their entire career, they have to accept that there's a limitation, that maximum point on that job. And if I want to make more money, I have to get new skills and education so I can apply for and get a job that goes beyond that maximum salary for a janitor, you know. That's, that's kind of the way things work. Many counties have given COLAs and merit raises over the years. This is pretty standard operating procedure for loyalty. But then we get really skewed, you know, where that janitor makes more than the janitor actually now. That exists, that's a problem that exists. Also.
But let's not, let's not, yeah, but let's not just limit this to janitors. I mean, that's, that's why I'm...
The entry level job, you know.
But there's other jobs in, such as in the DA office. Did you want to say something?
Can't, can't you fix the problem of getting outside the scale by if they give COLAs by adjusting?
The whole.
The chart.
The whole chart.
By the same percentage and then you're adjusting the whole scale.
And that's my point, the salary structure, whether it be a, the janitor or some other position, an attorney or anybody else on that scale, there's a minimum and a maximum for the scale. And, and whether it's divided by grades or minimum midpoint maximum, the experience and tenure in that position is addressed by placement between minimum and maximum. The ideal is that you don't bring someone in less than minimum, otherwise they're not qualified for that job. And you don't pay someone over maximum because that's more than the job is worth. But every person or every job, every position for that, in that grade is falls somewhere between the minimum and maximum point for that grade. And, and you make adjustments for additional education, additional experience and tenure and loyalty and all of those kind of things.
Positions of work, you know.
Between the, the minimum and maximum for that particular grade that that, that position has been assigned.
And, and Kay and Michelle, the discretion of the minimum and maximum, that happens with the hiring individual. That, that, those types of levels of decisions are...
No, you set a policy where you allow your supervisors to hire. You're allowed to hire from the minimum to, to five percent towards above that or whatever. You set up, that's all part of the policy setting is making those decisions in, in a way that everybody is compelled to follow them. But the way county government works, here's, here's a problem that happened in Wichita County. So we had our structure set up and we're rocking along and everything's going well. One of the JP's longtime employee retires, somebody making probably almost the maximum of the range. That budget is already set. She hires a brand-new employee and pays them what the exiting employee was making. And there, there only, there's no way to stop that until the new budget year. And judge got really annoyed about it and basically told her, "You better make sure that employee knows in the new budget year, her salary is going to this." And that's because that's where it belongs, you know. But so you'll have those types of problems. Once that budget is set, these elected officials have whatever that salary is until the new budget year. So that person got paid like ten thousand dollars more than she should have for the few months left in the budget year until that salary could be adjusted downward.
So I want to dive into that just a little bit in terms of when the salary is set at the budget year and any changes made to that after that for maybe attrition, new position coming in, salaries kind of being shifted through the budget cycle. What's your opinion on that?
Well, that's where your auditor, you know, could probably answer some of these questions. There is different ways you can budget salaries in county government. If it's a, you know, the sheriff's department gets half a million dollars for salaries or you budget each individual job title, how are you doing it here?
We do both currently.
We do. And the laws, the rules with budgeting in county government are different based on how you budget your salaries. An amount that goes to the department, you have no discretion over deciding if the sheriff wants to give all that money to one person and everybody else gets minimum wage.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Understanding is y'all budgeting the salaries in a lot. And if I have like Bruce Sadler, been around here for over thirty years, was making a large salary as first assistant, I reduce that salary, turn around and then adjust it through the lawyers, their salaries for good performance, longevity, doing extra projects, those sort of things. And I do that in, whether it's lawyers, secretaries or investigators in my department. That's how I handle it every time. I have a first assistant leave that's making a hundred thousand dollars that's been doing it for twenty years. The experience, the lawyer I'm going to hire to take his place, Jason, he hadn't been doing it for twenty years. He didn't get that salary. But he did get a big, he did get a big pay raise because now he's my first assistant.
Right, that's normal.
But you adjusted within, in the department, the way I do it, among the people in my three, what I call my three divisions. And you just keep it, and that's how I sort it. We're not having any problems.
And that's, that's where you're applying when they do that?
Well, it, 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 well, he has to do that within what you budget for him, you know, so...
I haven't changed my budget one bit.
Yeah.
I've just shuffled the money among the lawyers, if it's lawyer, secretary.
And that's all, that's all within that, this is an awful round of budget. And that's discretionary as he identifies, he knows what he has, what he has coming in, depending on that skill sets that is coming in in that professional arena.
Right.
But there are...
And there are others.
He's not giving a hundred thousand dollars to the new guy he just hires, you know, which that would, that would really skew things. And the local government code has different rules from what authority elected officials have over their budget based on how you budget, which I'm not an expert in and I'm not even going to try and address. I just know the rules change based on how you budget your salaries and other line items and whether or not it takes an official budget amendment or we can transfer between line items, you know, all that. Not my area of expertise, you know.
As a sheriff's department, we do the step increases, you know, third, year, then I get the step increase. Second year, they get the step increase.
Yeah, and, and, and somewhere down the line, you have to look at step one and say, "That is not a relevant step anymore." And we take step two and change it to number one and, and the old one goes away because the mid, the minimums are too low and they're, and they're, that's how we make some adjustments.
Well, a concern about this, this individual you talked about that got hired after the person retired.
Mm-hmm.
Having to make that salary, does that happen here, Ms. Kevin?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we would just, yeah, it doesn't matter.
I got one other thing to say about the two prosecution offices. For lawyers, we are competing on a statewide level. It doesn't matter where you are, what you're doing, we are competing against the rest of the state.
People who transference, right.
Yeah, same thing for IT's going to be right on.
And we, and you have to look at those groups that are unique where you are competing. Like IT is a typical job where you're competing with the private sector. If you weren't good IT people, you've got to pay the market rate. And those kind of issues are addressed individually as you develop your plan.
Is that composed in our initial survey assessment that we used in nineteen ninety-nine? Is that something that we do, have to, and, and develop where we're looking at?
Well, we can revive that, the compensation study that was done and the group and step placement. And then, of course, there's, there's always the concern that the jobs that were evaluated at that time, a clerk in the district clerk's office may not be doing the same work now. There may be more technology now than there was then. And so, those, those points might be different. They, if it were reviewed today, they may be placed differently today based on what's actually being done in the job. So there's, there's some of that that's inherent with looking at a study that is that age. But I saw it as a starting point to see, just at face value, if all the positions were equal, kind of where are we now? And, and so that's what we were trying to do and see are we, is, is our lowest-paid person in that grade and our highest-paid position in that grade within the percentage split that was, or a percentage that was close to the percentage that was set up by that survey.
So what is your recommendation?
And we're, we're looking at that now.
So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to take some time and look at our jobs as they are now. I don't know what the goal or preference of this court is if you want to get into doing an in-depth depth study or whether you want to, to try to revive the Ray and Associates and move forward. My suggestion and recommendation would be to spend some time and, and adopt either, either by reviving that old study and looking at the positions and, and trying to ascertain whether they're placed correctly. And then start from this point forward with some kind of a, a process, a procedure, a policy in place how we're going to apply our salaries as far as when a person leaves that's been there twenty years. Do we allow placement at the top of the scale or do we bump back to, to the minimum or within seven percent or whatever of minimum for bringing a new person on? Establish some, some guidelines.
Now, you have several department heads in here and I haven't heard from any of them. I'd like to hear from them, find out what they have to say about their individual departments and if there's issues there that we need to be, that need to be corrected and what, why are the issues? So if you would, department heads, could you come on up and let us know how you feel with your mischievous thoughts?
And Katie, quick question as she's coming to the podium. So you spoke to the mid and minimum points and kind of, kind of salary ranges. Those do not exist today, is that correct?
No, we don't use any kind of structure. We have a budgeted salary for each position.
Okay.
Yeah?
I, I just want to make a point that I think it's awesome that an elected official has that ability like Randall has. I, I totally agree with what he's doing. But when you take a small department like mine, I don't have that option. My employees have been there nine to six years, they're awesome, they're totally know their jobs and do a terrific job, but I can't compensate them for that. So if, I feel that unless you guys will do a salary adjustment each year or at a certain period of time, then my hands are tied. And so my employees suffer for being at a smaller department than being able to work in the DA's office. Does that make sense?
And I would say again, what makes this conversation often for me very difficult to have is there's obviously the emotional tie, tie to the salary conversation because we immediately equate the person that's doing the job today. And I think Michelle said it well is, you know, ultimately in the HR world, there is a value to X amount of job. And what we tend to do as humans, myself included, is we think of the people. And so it always is a very delicate conversation because the people are obviously much, worth much more than we could ever pay them. So that's always kind of the given, but the challenging part of it is the value of the job and what, what that looks like. So I mean, I absolutely hear what you're saying and you're kind of the frustration around that.
So it's not in complaint of them being able to do that, it's the fact that I can and I feel like my employees can suffer for that decision.
Thank you.
The median salary survey, and I'm sitting on the podium, I shouldn't have been. But clerks are making the least of anybody in the game. And we are, we compete with the district attorney, with private attorneys, with other, other county offices who are calling us all the time asking us how to do the job. So I don't know how to change that. Another thing I think you ought to look at is when you do a cross-the-board COLA, a person that is making twenty thousand dollars and you give a three percent raise, it's just six hundred dollars. And if you give that same three percent raise to a fifty thousand dollar employee, it's fifteen hundred dollars. You know, could you do a three percent of just so-and-so and a two percent for fifty thousand and above? So it's not getting increasingly skewed time after time.
Takes on that, just to make part of it discretionary money. Takes care of that problem.
Dave, you've been...
I disagree with that, Randall. That's why we had a problem. It's a discretion, I mean, we, because we have discretionary money for somebody. I mean, I mean, there's a philosophical, and I'm not saying I'm against discretionary money, but if you do discretionary in COLA, that's why, that's how we got to where we are today. I mean, didn't one of the other...
Well, it depends on how good your department head is because if your department head does the right thing, it will be a problem. If your department head doesn't do the right thing, then it's going to be a problem.
Meaning what, revenue?
Meaning six hundred buck pay raise versus eighteen hundred dollar pay raise, gone to three percent. Turn around and make part of that COLA discretionary. I've asked you, like I've always asked you, that I've never not asked that you release discretionary money during those times there was a different COLA issue. I've always asked for that. Jason and IT said he wanted to do it, but if you take half, like last time, what was it, two percent? And gave half of that, gave a half percent as discretionary. Then you take that half percent and the lower-end employees that are not getting that same amount of pay raise, they're doing well, that do extra things and that sort of thing. That's where you use that discretionary money to help raise that lower end to stay even with the higher-paid employees. I've got the highest-paid employees and their office is probably next, the county attorney's office, the lawyers. So say I'm starting, starting salaries is in the sixties, sixty-five. So we'll say sixty, that's eighteen hundred bucks for a three thousand dollar employee. It's going to be nine hundred dollars. It's going to be half difference. Turn around and take some of that discretionary money, then turn around and apply it toward the lower people. And that's how you keep it coming up.
Well, I think that's part of the challenge of the court, Randall, is that we have several kinds of policies kind of being implemented throughout the county. So the court is kind of having to react to all forms of policymaking and, and thus these outliers continue to happen. So I, I follow you in terms of what you're doing in your department, but I would say that is not the general rule across the county and that's part of the conversation.
And that's what, that's what I'm saying. Jason and I are the only ones that take advantage of that. If you do discretionary money, it's more work for Carrie, but...
He always remembers to say that.
It gives you the opportunity, it gives you the opportunity to work with those lower-level employees. I know when I go to a square party, you get fifteen hours, at least fifteen hours of CLA. When I go to a seminar, now that I'm really involved in the business, it, talking to other DAs and other people in my position about where they're starting their people at, where they're paying their employees and all that kind of stuff, every time I go somewhere. Every time I go to Austin, we have those discussions after after seminar is done and eating together and doing that sort of thing together and hanging out together. And we talk about those kind of questions. And I can tell you, my office is pretty well in line with what the rest of the state's doing as far as my employees. I can tell you right now, I know a place in their size, they've had an attorney position open that's starting at seventy thousand dollars and it's been open for over a year. They can't get any money taken. So, but I think... So, um, but I think department heads have the opportunity to go do that. I think the discretionary money fixes the part of the raise issues. When you have, um, the sheriff's department, that was one issue way back with the discretionary money. Um, Mike started adjusting the salaries in the sheriff's department at the top. Just where he started at the top and then was working his way to the bottom. The DA's office, when Rebecca and I, Rebecca was leaving and I was taking over that budget, that budget cycle. We started with the secretaries, then we went to the investigators, and we did the lawyers' labs. And that upset some lawyers, but we took the small end and moved it up before we did anything with the big end. So that's another thing that lawyers got a little ticked off about that, but some of them get it. But the bottom line is you adjusted the bottom up so that spread was less versus starting at the top and spread getting bigger, which at that point in time upset a lot of members of that current commissioner's court. So I think it's just being what I would call smart or thinking things through in a common sense fashion about how, the long run, about what you do, which I try real hard to do. And I think others are capable of doing that too. There's never going to be anything that's going to fix the renegation department head that's an elected official.
Well, and I think, um, to your point, Randall, then the job description should match the value of that job. And so that's where the conversation should happen is what is it truly that lies in that job that makes it so unique? Because we could spend 80% of our time on 2% of those issues and those are the outliers and those will always exist. I, I don't think this practice will remove any of that. Or we can take kind of a hard look at what is if it is happening? Because I think every example that Michelle kind of throughout this morning has in some, in some way, shape or form happened at this county. And so I think that's where the conversation again is just coming from and continuing to say, these things are happening at Potter County. Salaries are our biggest expenditure. And so how are we being proactive, really looking at policy, which is where the authority lies and the court is the policy? Our job is not to dictate the value of these employees because I said they are obviously worth much more than we could ever pay. But with that comes a package and some of that being retirement package, benefits. There are some things that this county does well and I would stand up and say that, we do that very well, that attracts good people. And we are a good county and a good employer and a citizen of, of our whole area. So I think part of the kind of that is we feel defeated before we start because it sounds so exhausting. They go, we want to start this again, but there is a cost to doing nothing at the same time.
And I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. All I was doing was pointing out the things that I do as a department head and I'm a state employee and that's why my insurance is going up 9% and my dental insurance is going up, excuse me, 7% and my dental insurance is going up 9%.
And that's across the board happening.
But that's from state employees handling it. So, but I'm not knocking what's happened here today. I think it's a good discussion, a good thing to do. And I would encourage department heads, when you do have somebody that's been there forever, good in the job, there's other people in there, you can rearrange this salary.
I think there's been a lot of great information presented today since I've been here. And I think we have a foundation already, starting point of a, a committee that's been devised to look into all of these points. So, um, it, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, if you'd like to say something, then just, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I was part of that last salary survey, um, by Rand Associates. And, um, I'm not sure how I think this work was actually. And my department is really different, um, than just the typical, I mean, county that has all the same offices from one county to another. So there are, there are jobs and offices that really to get a description, a job description and a median salary, you do have to go ask to the industry. And our department is that way. And, um, until I presented that, I quoted it two years, years ago, I guess, with Kerry, um, those job descriptions and median salaries, uh, my own district is very underpaid according to what we do, in my opinion. And, um, as far as, uh, of course, Panthex has a whole record management division and of course we could compare to some degree. But even when I presented those descriptions and median salaries, they were already at least two years behind at that time. Or, I mean, but you know, by the time they get something in print, they get it out, it's always old. But, um, so the job that I have, including myself, there are eight of us. And of those eight, excluding myself, I have two 20-year employees, two 17-year employees. And two that are five years and under. And so trying to think about what do you do with employees that have, you know, given their time for 20 years? You know, I don't think you can just skip over that. Uh, I think that, you know, years ago, we had longevity pay and that was now way down because of the, the statement that was made previously about, you know, that just throws everything out the way. If somebody's been here a long time, they make more money every year. I think ours is $5 for every year you live longer and work here. Um, but the thing was is when that person leaves, then the person coming in doesn't get that. So their salary stays lower. Um, but you know, I, I just think that it's really important for, for you to realize that there are some jobs, like IT as well, that you just have to go outside of the counties to find what they should be paid and what they do. And I know a lot of what we do, if we were not in office for the county, all the other offices would have to hire more people. And that's just the truth. That's just out there. Um, and they would not want to work for them. And so I think we save, though we have salaries, I think we save county money. Uh, in fact, that, you know, we saw this when we first really got our department going. This is how many mail machines were bought by the county? Well, we only need one. But there were multiple mail machines in the county at that time. And, um, record storage was a mess and that's saying it very nicely. And people couldn't find, you know. And it, it's just that sort of thing. If we're going to progress as a county, we want to be as good at what we do as another industry out there or it's basically would be a joke for, for our department to just kind of go on what other clerks, you know, because they just don't compare. They just, there is no comparison. And our job, our, our department is, our, our jobs are changing very quickly. And some of the things that we're doing are having to change very quickly. And so, uh, we wrote descriptions when the Rand Associates were hired and they were paid well. And, uh, those are just not the same anymore.
Yeah. And so then I keep going back to the job descriptions and the value of that job. And so, um, I would just add in terms of a comment about the mail machines. I would think, I would like to think we're all being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And that's a given in what we're here to do with the dollars that we have. And I don't, this county in terms of being proactive and aggressive in this core, I think it was my first year in office that we particularly saw your, your position out of line and brought you a line. So we're, I think, you know, the whole point of that statement is that we are hearing you and we are trying to address those, um, from the top down and the bottom up in all directions. And so part of this is still that the policy is lacking, which I think is where the expertise comes in. So I mean, I'm glad you're on the committee. You'll bring a lot of that insight, the historical piece to what has happened and has brought us to where we are today.
Uh, Jake, who's on the committee?
Commissioner Kelly, I know.
Did you know I was on? Sorry.
You're on.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought, I thought you said it right now. Well, I know there'll be, uh, there'll obviously be department feedback, so you know, bring everybody's...
We have Commissioner Kelly, myself, um, Melin, huh? Mike Henn, Kerry, um, Carolyn. And Carolyn.
Yes.
We certainly, and I see Randall jump over by that, so we certainly, you know, our representative from the, uh, the DA's office, county attorney. And any, any judges that, uh, that...
No, that committee was developed, Commissioner Kelly and I communicated on it. Wanted to keep it to a, a small number where we could make it, you know, where the committee could come to some kind of consensus on something.
Well, I disagree, I disagree with that simply because we are, from what I've heard here today, we've got a lot of different information that may not be proposed of, uh, the ones that are sitting currently on that committee. Now, I agree that we probably need to, to narrow it down as, as closely as we can, but at least have some ad hoc participation, participation on these committees that we can bring in individuals to get to go on to their inputs. And, uh, and, and by the, the numbers of the ones that listed today, I don't think really, uh, composes all of that information.
Sheriff's department has a third of the employees of Potter County right on there.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
So I think we need to, we need to broaden, I suppose, at least, at least consider ad hoc participation.
And those that have an existing system in place, whether that's the DA or IT, um, and certainly time constraints, I know are a factor, but an existing system that can be discussed, frankly, if so.
I just, I just have one more question. What happens if a department head hires somebody outside the salary range or an elected official does?
That's where the policy comes in, Randall. And I think that's premature, quite honestly, in my opinion, to answer that today.
Right now, there is not...
There is not...
Any more comments about that reason? What do you, what do you mean by that? I mean, I, I mean, I, I think I haven't answered your question, but I want to make sure I understand your question. Like, I mean, are you asking, can you, or let's say our department?
If the money's in my budget and I, as an elected official, hire somebody in a position, say first assistant outside the salary, above the salary range of what it's, what it may be, but there's money in my budget to do it?
I don't think you can right now because I think that position has a set budget. And I think you can get, uh, you know, within that range, I think you can do that. And I think, I mean, I think the way you handled your, your salaries, I think you can also do that. But I don't, I don't think we could go, like, if we've got a position for attorney budgeted at, you know, $40,000 and we go and hire an attorney for $50,000, we've got to figure out another way to come up to fund that money for hot check or, or for your fund or something. See what I'm saying?
But what if the money's in my budget to do that? My group's salary budget, the money is already there.
It, it kind of...
Three or four of them at one time and I hired somebody.
Yeah.
But a higher position and the other two were...
I think you have other, I do think if you have other money in your personal budget, you can do that around. And that's, that's one of the problems I think we have with the system we do. We need, we need to either, what we do is we give money, you know, the commissioners say, okay, county attorney, you got X number of employees. And then they say, here's this amount of money for salary, but they don't say, you know, for this position, first assistant, this much, you know. And so if they did that, you could not do that. But, but if you have money now that's unspent of the amount of money they give you, then I agree with you in that. And there's nothing we can do about that.
I was wondering in the scenario, if some latter gets, uh...
Right.
What's going to be the sanction, obviously to the department head?
They store it. If there's a policy, but the trick is coming up with a policy everybody agrees with.
Dave, speak to that last point. Yeah, you mentioned that if there was unused money.
If there's unused salary money, then I think, I think he kind of...
For that particular budgetary reward, does it extend beyond?
They can't raise a salary that will put their total salaries for a 12-month period over that.
Right.
You have to give them more money at the beginning of next year. We watch that very closely.
But like, let's say, we don't hire an attorney or a position, we don't fill a position because we don't need it, but we think we need to give more money to our victim assistance coordinator, we can sure do that.
Today, but yeah.
That opportunity has not been afforded to every department.
The smaller department, the less...
Well, the difference, the difference is...
You get a salary, you get a salary, but if you have a certain number of employees underneath you, if somebody leaves, you're free to doctor the salaries.
Well, if you say that, that that's not been afforded to...
Sandra, don't forget, while there's some departments that work directly for the commissioner's court, so they control that.
But the salaries are established by the court and, and the salary dollar amount. So obviously, uh, there will be continued discussions. And, and to Commissioner Vaughn's point is there are individuals that are missing even from an ad hoc perspective. Um, so Kay, you know, if we can have you maybe bring some recommendations back to the court about who should serve in an ad hoc position, obviously, I think the sheriff's office being one-third of the positions and when they can be brought in. And Commissioner Kelly will lean on your discernment of what that might look like.
I think we might, might want to expand it, I guess, expand the committee, uh, not just ad hoc, but expand it. And I think possibly we may want to add another commissioner.
Okay.
And somebody from the sheriff's office.
What we did in Wichita County, our committee was kind of large because we wanted to make sure key areas are represented, law enforcement, particular departments like IT that have had difficulty recruiting and, and larger departments. And of course, having a couple of members from commissioner's court is important for direction and, and saying, you know, that's something I can see us doing, you know, forget that, that's the craziest idea, don't ever fly, you know. So it, it's a kind of a large committee. I would say we had 12, 14 maybe members.
Were you able to get things done with that many members?
Well, yes, they were long meetings. It was a long year, let me put it that way.
But you do it on the onset. You don't have to worry about being blacked out, migrant.
Sandra, if you, like Sandra, like, want to be on the committee? Anybody else that's not here representing the departments?
Tax office is also another large, fairly large department.
If you need another major, I'll really help.
Uh, what commissioner would like to also serve?
Commissioner Vaughn or Commissioner Church, who would like to serve?
I would love to serve. I have two tax now, now to, for maybe two, three months. But, uh, after that, I'd be more than happy to serve. But, but we need to get some things done fairly quickly.
Commissioner Gia, are you doing anything that you...
Uh, I have taken on the local government corporation seat that has taken a lot of time.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
One, one thing I wanted to talk philosophically briefly, the difference between COLA and... Is that you... Yes. I'll let you do it. Okay. What COLA is. And one thing we need to really keep in mind, there's a lot of discussion here about discretionary versus COLA. When you're talking, or an across-the-board increase, when you're talking about a COLA increase, which is the, the 2% that the, the county has given, um, in the, in the two years that I've, two, your two budget cycles that I've been here, a COLA increase is a cost of living adjustment. The ideal, idea or philosophy behind COLA is, okay, our county's salary structure, everybody's, um, salaries are off a little because of cost of living. Our cost of living has gone up, so we need to move our whole, um, pay base, if you will, up by 2%. That's a COLA. You, you lay that on top of whatever salary, uh, structure you have in existence at that time. A discretionary increase is used to address, um, strong performers, merit increases.
Longevity.
Longevity discretionary things where you're moving particular individuals within your salary structure up by a certain percentage or a certain step. But they're two totally different types of increases.
Discretionary or your merit increases should be tied to a written performance review, which no counties do. I have yet to find a county, there are some departments that do them, but there's no county-wide performance appraisal happening in any county that I work with. And so, and so merit and discretionary money is, becomes that department...
And so, and so merit and discretionary money is, becomes that department head's opinion of his people, but isn't, you know, like, in my, I've been working in human resources for about thirty years now, scary how old I am. But you can have a merit system in place and we have this much dollars to put towards merit. So we do performance appraisals and we only have enough money to give people who score in the top thirty percent merit money. And then those people who don't score high enough, they're left out, you know, because that's all the money we had to spend. And, and that changes every year depending on what money we have and, and those performance appraisal rankings, which is another area that takes a full education of getting people on board and understanding how to do a performance appraisal correctly in a way that doesn't create liability. And that's really why a lot of counties don't do performance appraisals because they can create liability when you fire somebody who's been fabulous for fifteen years and now we are trying to send them out the door because they're terrible at their job. And then you're in court and you can't, you can't defend that action, you know? So that's another whole area I can talk for an hour on.
All right, Kate, do you have any questions?
I will expand the committee as instructed here. One thing I did want to say, the existing committee, as it exists today, did ask that I send out an email to department directors and along with the spreadsheet of all their positions. And posed the question, do you perceive there to be any internal inequities in your area? Just to see what do all departments think? I sent out that request, twenty-eight emails were sent out and I've got seventeen responses back to date. Thirteen of those responses indicated that they perceived no internal inequities, although of those thirteen, four of those felt like there may be some equity problems either not from within their own department, but in relationship to county-wide salaries or external salaries. And then.
Those that didn't respond, you just assume that they don't have issues?
Well, I, like I say, I have only heard back from, I've gotten seventeen responses back, but we did put the information out and I have those emails and I'm compiling, have compiled a summary list. And we'll set up another meeting of the committee with, to include the expanded committee members and, and we'll talk through.
Kate, for the record quickly, can you name off the committee members so that we have those?
I don't want to miss anybody.
You're fine.
We had facilities, Mike Head, elections, Malin Huntley, Kerry, auditor's office, Caroline Woodburn, District Clerk's office, and Commissioner Kelly. Along with Dave Kim. And yourself.
And then the ad hoc members that we talked about today to add to the committee?
The sheriff's office.
Well, I think, to make it clear, I think Commissioner Kelly indicated that.
Expanded members. We indicated sheriff's office, district attorney, IT, records management, additional commissioner, Commissioner Vaughn, and tax office, sharing.
Missing anybody? Randall, did you have something you want to say?
So am I, is the district attorney's office gonna be included in that?
Yes.
Okay, you have one elected official besides commissioner on that committee, the main committee, one elected official. All the rest of the department heads, the commissioners.
Well, I would say the sheriff, you have two commissioners and you have the sheriff, that was participation.
Into the.
Into the court committee.
Into the court committee?
Yes. All right. Okay, thank, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll clear this, I just comment.
All right, I think, certainly thank everybody for their time in an off time for commissioners' court and let the rest note those that joined prior to starting, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Vaughn, and Commissioner Church. We will officially close.
Wait, just a second, just a second. It's probably my fault, but I has saw no information on this meeting. And I'm supposed to be Jake Portem this morning. So I don't know how, who called it, how this came about, who did the communication, but anyway. I learned about it at five after nine, I was getting ready to go to a funeral. So anyway, I'm a little disappointed, but it's probably my fault I missed something. But anyway, I just wanted to look.
Thank you, Commissioner, we will officially close at, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
I guess you have Judge Portem, go ahead.
Well, I stepped in in the absence of a pro tonight this morning, I was asked by Doug where to do that. I certainly not said the undertones, Commissioner. Do you like to say anything before we close? We'll officially close at ten twenty-five. Thank you and have a great day.